Is everybody able to get on here?
No way.
Anybody not? They're not? Everybody there? Okay, let's call me in order. Jenny, roll call.
Dale Delphi.
Here.
Rachel Henderson.
Here.
Mark Summons. Carl Palmer.
Here.
Amy Riddles Watson.
Here.
Charlie Schneider.
Here.
Angie Scilling.
Here.
Aiden Smith.
Here.
Dominique Stewart.
Here.
Okay, we have form. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, on your ground, individual, liberty, and justice for all. Again, by reading the mission statement, the school district of the Menominee area by embracing the unique needs and using the strength of our diverse community is dedicated to preparing all students to becoming lifelong learners, caring individuals, and responsible citizens. Anybody having recommendations for any changes to the agenda? Questions? Okay. There are none. Recommendations and commendations?
We have two commendations that'll be given out at the next meeting from our QIC groups, genuinely preparing those, but we do not have any tonight.
Okay, thank you. And our October highlight on youth.
So the October highlight for youth is attached to the board and it's also listed in the public content. That will also be shared out district-wide on social media tomorrow. I can say that our September highlight on youth report received many nice comments and compliments. But just to give you a little bit of background, the highlight on youth for October focuses a lot on homecoming. Also, the FFA Power Venture Procedure Team competed virtually in the national competition. And I don't want to go too much into what our student representatives are going to share. But also a visit to the Jerk Creek Stream by the middle school, doing a stream study. And then through our elementary schools, all sorts of different activities that have been going on this fall. So board members will be able to get a chance to look at it, so we will share it up hopefully starting tomorrow. Thank you.
All right, and our student representative communications from Katrina and Rebecca.
That's not Rebecca. I'm Max Ford, and I'm stepping in for Rebecca and the student council secretary and the student body secretary. And we are going to report.
Just in case people come in here, so this is Max Ford, and you're stepping in for Rebecca.
Yes. Okay. The environmental biology students have been working, gathering seeds for the physical query. The seeds will be planted at a later date to help continue the restoration.
The Menominee High School Homecoming Week went very well. We had 46 parade participants. Coronation went really well, too. There was a lot of good feedback from participations with the coronation. The freshmen were the overall class winners of Homecoming Week. They were very excited about winning. This year, we had some of the best participation in Homecoming Week we've had in a while.
All right, thank you. And Community Communications. Before we get started, the opinions, beliefs, and viewpoints expressed by the various speakers during the Community Communications do not necessarily reflect the opinions, beliefs, and viewpoints of individual board members, the board as a whole, or the school district of the Menominee area, nor do they reflect the official policies of the SDMA. With that, we have three speakers tonight, and I apologize, Peter Monocci, is it McHenry?
Yeah, McHenry.
Come on, state the name and your address, and then you have to talk three minutes.
My name is Peter McHenry. I live in Boyceville, Wisconsin. I am currently retired. I grew up in Wisconsin, southern part of Wisconsin. I got raised, three kids of my own, and paid my share of taxes to the school district. And I feel that because of that, I have a right to express my opinion on some things that I see going on in our school system. It's been brought to my attention that there are books that allow to commit to the libraries of the school that introduce trans-genders. And, you know, when I was raised, when I was raised in the school system, you know, I went to church regularly. And I was taught that there are two genders, actually, divided. These books are teaching that transgenderism is a rite of peace. And they're trying to indoctrinate our children, our children, our future. They're trying to make them aware of things that do not exist. It is our duty to put some resistance to this. And I encourage all of you to look deep within yourselves. Do you want our future children to grow up thinking that there are more than two sexes? And create a future in their lives? I know the school system does give money, you know, from the government to have these books. They're not like transgender or fair or ill, but they are a standard respect. It is not fact, and it is imperative and might be impaired to put some resistance to this, to love who is right. Thank you for your time.
All right, next up, we have Tyler Meacham.
Hey, good evening. I'm Tyler Seem, located in 685450th Street in Menominee. And I'm a recurrent, and then heard throughout my daily last meetings as bringing up the discussion on tennis courts. We would like to thank the entire board for taking the time to discuss that the other week. It was, you know, a very great conversation, and glad to get things rolling that way. We do understand it's not an easy decision, or it's a process that changes along with standing policy. And we understand when policy changes, there is effort that needs to be made to make sure that it's on the right way. So again, we appreciate your time. There were a few points that were brought up during the discussion last week that we would specifically like to address. Just there are many types of confusion that may be specifically for my mom and her role in this request. First and foremost, we appreciate the mention of the Booster Club Wellfame, the memorial opportunity, and the distinguished alumni awards. While we are more than honored to work towards these recognitions, we believe someone who taught Coach Menominee versus tennis program for 38 years and with the success that came with her deserves consideration more. The program that girl has been so much cheer that she coached her last season while undergoing chemotherapy. And it was only possible because of the work of her amazing coaches, and she would have continued coaching as long as she physically could have. That's how much the program meant to her. Secondly, we would like to address the monetary contributions that have kind of been highlighted but not detailed at previous meetings. While she did recruit and manage parents of clean courts, clean up the tennis shed, many fundraisers, car auctions. Should be understood that much of what we see on the tennis courts were accomplished using grants written by Wendy and thus paid for by the USTA and supplemented with some volunteer work. Some of the items that were able to highlight it, two new ball machines at the middle school on the high school these months, over $2,000 a piece. Countless cases of tennis balls. She was able to get a grant to get tennis courts, the middle school tennis program, for any child that wants to play tennis and can be provided with a racket. Two large, half a ball carriers, a pavilion that was half funded by grant and half by volunteer work to be built. Benses at every single court. We're continuing to work with the USTA to get more information on specifics. At this point, we're estimating $20,000 to $40,000 in grants that my mom's able to take for the tennis program. On top of this, my dad is a Booster Club president for around 16 years. And in his time, the club was able to donate over $400,000 to Menominee Athletics. And again, it's something that comes with the participation of all sports coaches. So my mom was very involved with the meet the coaches night, golf outings, and football games on the program, which raised all the money that she put before Menominee Athletics. Additionally, as you mentioned, she also wrote dozens of grants as a diet teacher at Menominee Middle School, like we mentioned, tennis rackets, and also getting things like snowshoes and skis for abusive kids. So a career to consider during the 40 years of service, significant monetary contributions resulting in physical improvements to court programs, an ongoing legacy, like we mentioned before, in the form of an annual scholarship, continued fundraising contributions, vast display of community support that we've seen on previous meetings. As less valuable or worthy of being earned than a big name with the ability to write a check. Our students and programs do not survive or thrive off the dedication of those who commit to their hard souls and time to the success of these programs.
Tyler, can you stop? That will be three minutes later.
That all did.
And if you'd like, you can always submit that in writing, and also if we have it, we're able to read your full comment.
Okay, well, thank you. Great, thank you.
Thank you. Lastly, we have Suzanne Lee.
I am just going to read a book from the Menominee library for 4K through 5K.
Which book is this?
Okay. All right. This is Ruthie. She's a transgender girl. That means when she was born, everyone thought she was a boy until she grew a little older, old enough to tell everyone that she was actually a girl. Girl is Ruthie's gender identity. This is Ruthie's brother Xavier. Xavier is a cisgender boy, which means everyone thought he was a boy. And when he grew older, it turned out everyone was right, he was a boy. Boy Xavier, gender identity. There are so many different ways to be a boy or a girl, too many to fit in a book, but not everyone feels like either a boy or a girl. Non-binary is a helpful word that can distract private kid who doesn't feel exactly like a boy or a girl. This is Ruthie's friend Alex. Alex is both a boy and a girl. When Alex was born, everyone thought Alex was a girl, but Alex is both a boy and a girl. This is Alex's gender identity. This is Alex's friend JJ. JJ is neither a boy nor a girl. Ever since JJ was very little, they never felt exactly like a boy or a girl. They just felt like themselves. This is JJ's gender identity. And even with all these possible ways to be, some kids don't feel any of these words. They don't, they don't fit them exactly right. There are never ending number of ways to be yourself in the world. Whether you feel like a boy, girl, both, or loser, or to describe yourself in a way that is your identity. Gender, gender, gender identity. Your gender identity might match what people thought of you were. What thought you were when you were born, or at night. See, when you were born, you couldn't tell people who you were or how you felt. They looked and made a guess. Maybe they got it right, maybe they got it wrong. What a baby's body looks like when they're born can be a clue to what the baby's gender will be, but not always. When people guess wrong, it's okay to let them know. Ruthie was five when she told her parents. I know you think I'm a boy, but really, I feel like a girl. Whoops, Ruthie was a girl all along. They just didn't know it at first. When people guess right, it's okay. It's also okay to let them know. Xavier was three and a half when he told his family, "I'm a boy, I like being a boy." You might feel like a boy, you might feel like a girl, you might feel like both boy and girl, or like neither. You might feel like your gender changes from day to day, or from year to year. You might feel that none of these words describe you perfectly. You might not be sure yet. Maybe you're still figuring it out.
All right, moving on to revenue and expenditure reports.
Okay, I'm going to review the revenue report first, and this is through the month of September. For the general fund ten, we received in some local revenues, which totaled $18,627.66. We also received in our state's general aid payment. It's not about the business report yet, because it's not yet in Skyward, but we did receive a payment, and that will be reflected in next month. And then we also received in some gift donation funds in our Fund 21, which totaled $40,206.75. And special education, we have not received in any of those funds yet, which is not unusual for this time. Moving on to the expenses by function reports. We take a look at the percentage spent to date for the general fund ten. We're at 13.87% compared to last year. At this time, we were at 13.54, so expenses are up a little bit. Fund 27, special education, we're at 10.51% compared to 10.92 last year. And then Fund 50, our food services fund, we are at the best as well, at 10.25% compared to 13.33%. Nothing unusual to report for the expenditures in those funds, just the difference in one-time buildings and purchases. For example, if you take a look at the general tuition payments, it's higher at 2.09% compared to last year at .15%. And that was just a difference in bill timing for the summer school tuition payment that was made last year, it was made in October, this year it was made in September. And then lastly, we have our expenditures by object, and this is all funds. We're at 12.66% compared to 13.22%, so down a little bit compared to last year over all the funds. Again, nothing unusual, just one-time billing and timing of payments. Any questions?
Any questions for me? Thank you, Lynn. Onto the monthly employment report.
This is a standing agenda, and I can even see that there have been some new hires since the start of the school year. We also still have a few openings, although we're very pleased to have our teacher positions filled. They have had some additional hourly positions needed, and I know the board approved some recently based on enrollments, hiring anticipated in moments, especially in the area of special education. So we still are taking applications if anybody's interested in working as a parent educator. We would certainly love to see your application. You can see Samantha Hoy or Tony Kowinski. We also are still looking for substitute teachers and substitute hourly employees as well. We're doing pretty well with subs, and we appreciate all of our subs. But especially in the hourly situation, if anybody's interested in working in the kitchen once in a while, or serving as a clerical sub, or as a substitute in the classroom, working with some of our students who need some help, please see us, we'd love to have you. Thank you.
Okay, onto the consent agenda. Motion approved. Motion by Carl, second by Andy. So we have minutes from the September 12th to 26th meetings, financial reports. We have donation, $1,500 to NAP Elementary from the NAP TTO for book giveaway. The final question, we mentioned Safety Girl from Lefkann in Downsville, and the travel to, where is that one?
New York City.
New York City. And all of those attachments, well, any discussion? All right, stick 'em up. Take this eight to zero. Moving on to the personnel consent agenda. Motion approved. Motion by eight, second by Rachel.
If you won't mind, I'm Charlie List. I would just like to note that we have received retirement notifications from Mrs. Lisa Jasper Meyer and Anita Patch. Both Ms. Jasper Meyer and Anita Patch are third grade teachers at Lefkann Elementary School. We really appreciate you giving us notice early. And we are anticipating, like we do every year, we're anticipating a number of retirements based on the demographics, we look at our staffing list. We expect some more, it's not going to be just two. But teachers have until January, middle of January to let us know if they plan to retire at the end of the school year. Well, Mrs. Jasper Meyer and Ms. Patch already let us know. And especially in the more difficult hiring environment, it's nice to have that so that we can get those postings ready. And we recommend that the board approve their retirements with thanks effective as you end the school year.
One question, Joe, because you have these notifications, really, will you post them really? Or still post them at the same time?
Well, I think we're not going to post them this fall. So I would say after the first of the year, usually do our initial posting. You can't get too far ahead of it, then you don't get a good candidate pool. At the same time, it allows us to make plans, and it's helpful.
Sure.
In a lot of times, it can turn on movement as well, and that downhill effect can be something to deal with.
Any other questions?
I think something I saw this fall as the school year kicked off was the excellent served my partnership that was shown on the opening days. And I'd be interested to hear your experience and find how do you have your teachers coming on, and we've got almost 60 years of experience together. And, you know, thinking, you know, almost 60 years of fantastic work. As new people come on, we gotta make sure that everything's moving so.
We can definitely fill that in though, if you're in the room.
Any other questions? All right. I wonder what happened to the board votes known, except so would you, Terry. All right, and that passes the eight to zero, you're going to find that out tonight. Onto the actual agenda, approving the bid for banking services. Excuse me, motion by Carl, second by Andy to approve the bids. Any questions or discussion?
Sure, I'd just like to point out that the district did receive three bids, and Leah went through each of the bids, compared everything from fee structures to interest rates, and the ease of working through the system. And Leah has recommended that the district continue working with her on that.
And thank you for that, Leah, that was very comprehensive, please. Hold on. Any other discussion, questions? All right. Let's go. And then also passing on the eight to zero. Onto the discussion agenda. First, to review the 2022 state assessment report.
So the board is spending a lot of time this fall looking at assessment data. Just recently, we had a report about screening data in the school district, Brian DeNice chapter in that. Now, tonight, you're going to hear about assessment data, which is just really the raw assessment data. And then when we get to the end of the summer, you're going to hear about the school report garden, which has the assessment data, growth data, and other factors in measuring the student's success. So tonight, it's all about student assessment, and Brian, go ahead and take it away.
All right. So to start out with, just a little overview of this key thing, anyways, that accompanied the board in the board acts. First off, the state assessment data that you're looking at this year comes entirely from the state assessment taken last spring, early in the month of March and April, the pre-early assessment taken last spring, in grades third through 11th grade. So each of those grades has a state level assessment, the Wisconsin Board exam, the ACT SIRE exam, which will transition this year into pre-ACT exam. And then the ACT, as we say, the junior year in Wisconsin. Wisconsin's been giving the ACT universally to all students in the 11th grade for a number of years now. And then we also have an alternate assessment for roughly no more than 1% of our student population, who may base off of their individualized education plan, their IDP, identified to take, which is referred to as dynamic learning maps. So a few things related to state assessment to share. You know, as I think everybody is well aware, in the spring of 2020, with the onset of COVID-19 pandemic, there were not state assessments in Wisconsin, it was paused that spring. So when we came back in the spring of 21, the region of the state as a whole saw a pretty big dip in overall efficiency. in the spring of 21, the region as a state as a whole saw a pretty big dip in overall efficiency levels. Locally in Brabney, we did not absorb.
Welcome to that.
So.
They're celebrating ourselves.
Exactly. That's right, perfect. So in the map, individually, we did not see quite this big of a dip, but very much still the map in spring of 21. And in spring of 22, what we noticed in the map is we started to see it improve. In some cases, nearing our pre-pandemic proficiency levels. And in a few areas, specific grade levels actually exceeding some pre-pandemic proficiency levels, which is really nice to see. We were hoping we could see that, not necessarily expecting that could be reborn in certain areas. But some highlights that are going out. When you take a look at the bump in all grade levels together in the areas that are tested, English language arts, math, science, and social studies, in the map, we see the state compare, which is something that was described before. When you take a look at the ACT in isolation by itself with one grade level, you're going to see more ups and downs, peaks and valleys with proficiency levels. Last spring, it was only the second time since statewide administration of the ACT that the liberal composite score for students at not in high school was below the state comparable. Most cases, we usually see that gap above the state comparable. And we anticipate that will continue to be even more above the state comparable moving forward. When you take a look at each of the areas identified in the report itself, a few things to point out. When we're looking at ELA, English language arts, our elementary, we saw in LACE upward direction of our proficiency levels that was observed in most of our comparables to a certain comparable for the regional school, I should say. In the report, just so you guys see, not only what is our showing through, but what does that performance in the name of the state supply. In a lot of cases, you see similar peaks and valleys, a few spots that are kind of isolated. In addition to ELA, a couple of things with some of our subgroups that we have. A few years ago, we started figuring out at the board level our students with disabilities, economically disadvantaged, and our English language learners. So you can see in each of those areas, as far as ELA, we're seeing some slight efficiency increases over the last time the assessment was given, however, not yet just pre-pandemic levels, which matches what we're seeing in other areas as well. Moving on to math. When we take a look at math, this is an area that we've seen a really nice increase, actually moving not only here, but in some of our areas higher than were pre-pandemic, especially that between five. It really makes up for the swing of that. When we take a look at our students with disabilities, that would be one of the areas we've seen the greatest increase where our students with disabilities are currently performing at a proficiency level above the pre-pandemic level. Economically disadvantaged students as well, not quite there with our language learners. Other areas that are assessed, these exams, science and social studies. Later on, we'll talk about our school report cards, both still considered heavily in ELA, including in math. But we also in grades four, eight, and ten have social studies assessment. And science is assessed in fourth grade, eighth grade, and eleventh grade as part of the ACT. And then our Aspire assessment also has a science component. When you take a look at science, fourth and eighth grade, this last year were above that of the state comparable. And then when we jump into the ACT, our science, skill score was above the state comparable in the ACT. When we take a look at social studies, our elementary and middle social studies continues to perform above the state comparable. Not quite there at very high school. One thing that I will point out about the social studies assessment is last year, while the names of the tests that the kids took stated saying it, the actual assessment itself was reworked in fourth, eighth, and tenth grade, new based off of the updated assessment standard. So we can't do a direct comparison of last year's social studies assessment two into the previous social studies assessments, because the questions are all different due to new set standards. But really, all of this information that's contained within the report is pointing in the direction that our students and our staff, we know they work very hard at working in the classroom, making sure that they're responding to these. But the nice thing that we're seeing on the efficiency side of things is we're starting to see gains since the pandemic. And in some cases, we're seeing proficiency levels approaching and even surpassing in the area of math what we were seeing pre-pandemic. So I'm happy to spend some time going through any of the fire points if you have specific questions. But like Joe did say, this is one part of our student performance story. The one that I think you'll see a lot more about in the union is when we come back later in November and talk about our school and district report cards. Because that takes a look at not just last spring's state assessment, but the assessment performance for prior three assessments as well as several other student invasion factors as well. It's a much more full picture of student performance and how our students are doing on the state assessments and participation. Questions, Amanda?
I think many of the graphs are basically comparable to, it looks like regional schools. I'm curious if you looked at comparables of schools that maybe aren't necessarily regional that have similar title breakdowns, right, or similar food aid incentives, things like that. Be curious to find out from across those factors, because the local is close, right, the economy is very different.
And to answer your question, so that is one thing we do here at William. And in some cases, within subgroups as well. To say, is there an exact replica of the map?
Of course, there is.
Of course, we know there isn't. So we try and pick and choose, not to turn it upside down, but if we want to look at economic disadvantage, we should try and find some there if we want to look at IDP and social application numbers there.
Any other questions coming up the bracket?
Hey, just the ACT and it's really not even more important, you know, being on here.
Yeah.
That's the outlier, as you said, is the one thing we're seeing slump a little bit compared to historically. Do you have a sense, just in your experience, what do you think that's about?
So one of the things that we do look at, they're trying to overtime, not only with a specific assessment, but also cohorts of students. And what I will tell you is while we always want to see a large number of students proficient as possible, but we did receive our ACT data, it held true to what we were expecting to see. And I've said this when I work with staff on a frequent basis. Our assessment data should never surprise us, and it weren't surprised. We did, you know, over the years, take a look at how can we best meet the needs of students in more performing subgroups. One of the things that we did notice with class of 2023 is we tend to have more outliers in that data set. We have some very high performing students and some students who historically haven't performed this high. If you take a look at some of the things that we put in place over the years, I think it is not just in response to that class, but how we better meet the needs of students who may not be as successful academically.
I mean, obviously, we're only talking over the last four years of a swing of maybe one from ACT. Where you see like Richmond, right, they're inside twenty, twenty two of order and dipped in twenty thousand ninety, so a three-point swing. So I'm not, you know, that concerned, I'm just wondering also for that cohort with COVID, may or may not affect the school. Were those kids at any disadvantage for ACT prep kind of stuff that would have been there in other years?
Well, the other thing that we also noticed is that was, in addition to COVID, was at a lot of the same time that many post-secondary institutions were having conversations about whether that ACT was necessary for admission. So I know even my own child having a conversation about, you know, okay, how much time do you put in for one assessment versus another? And you know, things like that. So I think, you know, I think there are lots of factors there. But as well, when we take a look at where the district was students before and we took a look at their data historically, I would say it was well within the realm of what we expected to see.
I think the point is right there, Brian, is very important to note that lots of, lots of colleges and universities are, not all, but many are reconsidering the use of useful space, which means they're actually dropping some bases from requirements for admission. So the economic incentive for students and parents in particular is quite different than in the past. And so the environment of admissions are being pressured to stay to the ACT is quite different than those five years ago.
Any other discussion there? Thank you, Brian. Onto reviewing the early college credit request for the spring of 2023.
This is a regular agenda. I know that board members see twice a year, except this time specifically talking about the spring, 2023. Appreciate Brian providing the background for the board. And you can see there were one hundred and eighteen requests by thirty-two students. As the board has heard before, not all students will take all these classes, but this is kind of their opportunity to at least get a foot in the door and then kind of decide from there what might fit best. Unless there's questions, this is really informational. I don't know, Brian, is there anything else you want to point out? Board members, I think you all saw this last year for the fall. Any questions the board members have? This is a great opportunity, obviously, for used-to-be students. Is there anything, Brian, that you've heard or read of this, that we would want to continue to prove this in any way? Any processes, any arrangements?
You know, I think really, one thing that we do with this on a annual basis, you take a look and see, are we starting to see a swell of requests in particular area? And is it something that we could be offering in-house or with partnership with the state's agency? But if it does, it provides an opportunity for kids who may not necessarily be able to pursue a specific course of study. Can use in an area that we may not necessarily be able to staff because the number of requests are not large.
Any other questions or discussion on that? All right. Again, this one. And reviewing, not moving on to reviewing the 2022, 2023 budget timeline.
So Leah and I wanted to give this in front of the board again. You can see that we're nearing the end of the timeline. In fact, the next school board meeting will be asking the board to approve the budget and then also set the tax level. And, you know, the board has seen this timeline at various checkpoints throughout the year. If you recall, you approved the culinary budget in the summer. And then we had annual budget hearing in August. And this is probably one of the most difficult months to be a school business official. So I think Leah is working many long hours after the audit and now preparing all the paperwork for the board for the next meeting. But because it is such a big event and such a big meeting, we want to make sure board members recall it out specifically for you. You can always go back and look at last year's materials if you want more time to study up. And then certainly, you'll have all the materials the week before, the twenty-fourth, so that you can see what we're preparing for you. If you have any questions, certainly, please reach out. The crazy thing to me is that you see the timeline and it ends in November and it begins in November. It's like, I can't actually, it never stops. But this is the end of the 2022, 2023 budget plan.
Any questions on the timeline?
So that's all we talked to me today, is through the day, the line for that timeline, it completes this one.
Yeah, yeah, just wanted to call to your attention, especially since we have a number of new board members. It's nice to have that preview. It's like the preview before the movie.
My time is literally prepared there.
Yeah, the trailer, that's what I should call it, the trailer. The trailer for the next quarter.
All right, moving on to discussing the renewal of the 2023 district health.
So similar to the budget plan, we also put together a plan for the board for the renewal of health insurance. And in that plan, we have hoped to bring to you tonight the renewal for you to approve. But as we have mentioned in previous meetings, this renewal is more difficult than it's been in the last several. Unfortunately, working with our consultants, there's been a number of different items that need to be studied. Also, just the way the market is right now is so much different. Getting the claims from August, you would think you would get those right away in September. That's not the case. We got our August claim very, very late, which have a pretty significant impact on what we, what our actuators do when they figure things out moving forward. So we are planning to have the renewal for your approval on the twenty-fourth. We'll share the information as we get it. Again, we're trying to work with our staff and work with our consultants to put together the best renewal possible. I will say we have a whole month, basically, for open enrollment. So November first, I believe it's November twenty-third, wait, second, twenty-third. So there's a lot of time after the twenty-fourth. But the reason why we didn't have it for tonight is because it's just in there, ready. Any questions?
Does that mean that it's possible that it could be going up and sort of trying to figure out how to handle that also with a huge jump? But, you know, kind of, to be, best I can.
Yeah, it's very likely to go up, Amy, and I know Carl said on the Health Insurance Committee, and our committee knows that. The renewal rates are anywhere from fifteen to twenty-five percent in a lot of similar situations of what we're looking at. What we're looking at is the background to see if there's anything we can do with the design. We were also talking with the Health Insurance Committee about some of the things with the plan that they like and don't like. We're hopeful to try to have as few changes as possible as part of it as well. But there's just a lot that we're looking at right now.
So a question about that timeline, I prefer to work from November first. So I guess it's going to be a question for send, maybe. Is that, that's basically, let me turn around, when it's approved by the board and then documentation has to go out to employees, you're going to have time to actually get.
Yeah, I can answer that question, yes. Actually, you can see that October twenty-fourth goes, October twenty-fourth to November eighteen. And that's when we go, I see November eighteen did not get folded there. Is that what you're looking at?
I'm going to, we have that person that can hold mine, right? So, yeah, so the presentation, okay, I see.
Right, so the October twenty-fourth, hold it point, that actually, October twenty-fourth to November eighteen. And we go around each building and make presentations. So yes, there will be enough time to prepare materials. And really, the open enrollment is not started until November first. So we have, we'll be able to do that.
Okay, as long as, as long as you're trying to get out of the document, we should everything for the employees.
Yep, there is.
Any other questions or discussions?
Yes, Amy.
I assume it's also a picture, Tyrese, to show?
Some of Tyrese, yes. Right, not as many of Tyrese, not as many of Tyrese are on the district health insurance plan anymore, but there are some.
Okay, I have one, it's a very neat question, so. So open moment, so my question, I certainly remember this. In many institutions and companies, is when there's multiple times between which ones are. between which ones are often here, though, you basically have, you know, the plans offered to employees, that are really.
There's a few variations, but. Well, for instance, choice, you know, years ago, we changed the plan to allow our ACO, directed works, one provider, but employees can choose a passport plan, but that is a premium home charger, so it's a little variation like that.
But you know, so people who are hired perhaps in the fall, right, are they supposed to then know that there's going to be something with this plan, and then maybe you can get them to take it?
Well, they have a whole benefit and a lot of, based on the ACI and all that stuff, but, yeah, they can enroll at different times. But just the general, you know, returning employee, whether it's myself or many of the other people in the district, this is why you have the opportunity to enroll.
Any other discussion there?
I think it's fair to mention a little bit, some of these challenges, and that with declining history of the last 12 months, some, some companies are not even, and it says not even by the pit for the, for our district because of the usage, so, you know, it's, some of the businesses are out there for complete surface pumping, and whoever can help bottom the other ones. You know, one, one bit does the things, another does the filing, another bit does the payouts, and those things have to line up to create a piece of together without doing a one package pumping as well, so it's kind of a frustrating situation, I guess.
Yeah, that kind of makes me think that people are shy of going to the doctor, because they're trying to go, kind of like the heart, so.
Well, like, we, I have talked about this, so we think that actually has had, and it's not just happened. That's been a developing for plans across the country with COVID. A lot of people deferred their regular care, so I think there's things that are now entering the system that are coming in further along than they would have, more expensive than they would have. And more, more, most part of it to us is, you know, we're concerned about our people. So no matter what we do, when we do our benefit presentations, we're really to emphasize the importance of preventive care and regular care, because it, it does make a difference. Okay?
The gentleman, we got a list of the sites that ran the last conference, there was a great spectacle, that's right. Is this available for all employees from schools?
All employees that qualify, so there are qualification creators, we are, you know, my art.
Do you have to work at the CERD elders' seat?
That's the biggest one. And that's in alignment with the port of care. So you can expect more information on that next time, but again, we're trying to keep feeding you information as we move forward.
Okay. Onto credit for this next meeting. State's committee reports, first is committee meeting in the 17th, Health Insurance on the 20th, regular board meeting, the cross-board meeting on the 24th, the fall was WSB, Vigo meeting, which is here around me. That, we have upset you. Be good, be nice to have a good turnout from our board there. And then into November, I'll read them all, I'll see them on the list of community meetings, yes.
I would like to point out, we have a closed school for students this week on Thursday. We have a professional development day on Thursday, and then on Friday, there's a closed school for students or staff. Kind of a fall break in response to all the parent's to the complexes that we have this month.
Yes. Carl, I want to know that the 24th will be at the middle school, discussing that.
Where did the keys come from? I don't know. Well, I hope mine could have been bad, but actually, I think Joe's. Joe, do you have things? Well, thank you, thank you. Very nice to you.
It is amazing that it's.
Since we moved the banking proposal, there's no need to go into closed session, so if I were to entertain, I want you to return.
You know, we say it's a good.
Oh, we did not. Thank you for the, the great tour of your building as well, very nice, very, very well kept, and, you know. Always interesting to see the different buildings and the different, the different things that hang on the walls from down to here and so forth. We commented on one of the teachers that white ones are tired of yours.
Yeah, if anybody doesn't know, Chris Humphrey is the principal here at Nap elementary. Chris, would you mind standing up for a second, please? Yeah, thank you for giving the board the word of the night.
So was that the entertainment on Tuesday?
I saw it.
Amy? In there?